Great, thank you. Welcome to the Milton Planning Board. This is the second meeting of fiscal year 2020. I will call this meeting to order. My name is April Anderson. I'm the chair of the board. And if the other members could please introduce themselves. Cheryl, we'll start with you.
Cheryl Togayes, member.
Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Denny.
Denny Swinson, member.
Rich.
Beeler, a member.
And our staff, Allison.
Allison Quinn, Assistant Planner.
And Julia.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Excellent, thank you. This evening, we have some sad news to share. A former member of our planning board, Ed Duffy, has passed away. And I think it would be appropriate.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Let's just take a moment of silence in honor of Ed, if you don't mind, please. Okay, I think we should wish his family and friends our condolences. It's very sad news. We have some administrative items to take care of. The next scheduled meeting of the board is August 13th. In reviewing what we have in the queue with Allison Quinn and Julia, it does not appear that we have any actions before us. So I am going to recommend that we cancel that meeting. We have two, one, at least one meeting next week for town meeting on July 28th. Possibly July 30th, if town meeting requires a second night. So in light of that, I wanted to propose canceling the 13th and leaving the 28th as scheduled unless we have no formal approval. And I would recommend canceling both and regrouping on September. Have any feelings about that?
I think that makes sense.
I mean ordinarily, I would be sailing. It would be great, but I'm not sailing anywhere, so.
You don't want to call in at 2:00 in the morning again?
Exactly.
Okay, so then let's propose we will formally cancel our meeting scheduled for, ordinarily scheduled for August 13th. We will maintain the meeting on August 28th.
August 27th or 28th?
August 27th, I apologize. August 27th. To be determined whether or not we proceed. But as of now, we'll keep that on the schedule. Our meeting again in person on July 28th at the Council on Aging for Town Meeting. Monday, July 27th, our new planning director begins his job, Tim Strzynski. We're very excited for him to return. So he's starting out with a bang, with his second night being town meeting. I did speak with Tim and let him know that we were meeting in person. And I left it up to him whether or not he's comfortable to do that. So we may see him on the 28th and we may not. But I think it's important to note for Allison and Julia as well. Of course, we'd love to have you. But I think everybody on the staff needs to make their own personal decision whether or not it makes sense for you to come in person. If you're comfortable with it, join us. We have some minutes to approve.
Yes, I just wanted to add, on August 27th, I wanted to suggest that we leave it to our chair to decide whether or not to have the meeting as the information comes in as we get closer to that date. In other words, I just wanted to give, you know, April the authority to be able to, you know, make her best guess. You know, when we get to August 20th or something, she can sort of do that. We don't need to have a meeting to have a meeting. You know what I mean? I don't know how other people feel, but.
Works for me, if it works for everybody else.
I appreciate it.
I didn't actually think through the mechanics of how that would actually happen, so.
Right, right.
Glad you all did.
I wouldn't want you to have to call everybody, oh, then that ends up being a lot.
So we can talk about not meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds about right.
Okay, I tried to send tiny tweaks. I just wanted to add a sentence to the June 25th meeting minutes. And that sentence was on page two, the second paragraph. I just wanted to add, Ms. Swinson inquired about an independent traffic study because she had received conflicting data on traffic safety. I'm sure a lot of you probably remember that during the Little Sprouts hearing. So just wanted to add that. So that was an amendment. If nobody objects.
Nope, no objection.
And then on the July 9th, I had two amendments, which were when we were talking about the East Milton language on the last page, last topic of the night. Mr. Beeler believed that the, we had, Mr. Beeler believed that mass housing had not been working openly. He had actually intended to say the applicant had not been working openly. And then he further stated he did not believe that the applicant had taken into account the concerns of the neighborhood. So I'm just swapping out the word "the applicant" for "mass housing" on those two locations. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then I move to approve with, as amended, June 25th and July 9th, 2020, meeting minutes as amended. Thank you.
Do we have a second discussion? No, if not, then I will do a poll vote. Rich Beeler.
Yes.
Denny Swinson.
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Cheryl Togayes.
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Great, thank you. And one announcement I just want to make for anybody that who has called in for the project that was advertised at 310 Granite Ave, the Euro Auto House, that application and that project have been withdrawn. So we will not be hearing that item tonight. Now I will turn it over to Allison for a staff update.
Thank you. So the East Milton Square volunteers have been sent a doodle poll to schedule the first meeting of this group in conjunction with the existing East Milton Square Steering Committee and the consultants Judy Barrett and Peter Flinker. And Judy will give us an update when she has more information and has a chance to get feedback from that group. Second update, the Planning Department is now accepting applications from students of the Wentworth School of Technology for a fall co-op to create an online resource for the town and public use for projects related to planning and development. Although this is an unpaid internship, we may incur some technical cost. I'm requesting that the board set aside some funding to help offset this cost within reason and potentially a small stipend for the student.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's going to be similar. We're trying to build something similar to like the Co-Urbanize platform. The student will be working with Rob Mallon, myself, you know, elected planning board, select board, whomever's interested in kind of looking at this and seeing what kind of information should be on it, what should be included. So I think it's going to be pretty substantive. So it'd be nice to, you know, have them not leave after the second day.
Allison, are you going to talk about the budget during your update?
So we're still, I'm trying to understand there's a, what had kind of happened, what I'm noticing is that some of the contracts are multiple year. So POs were created and then, you know, whoever was entering them kind of changed hands or whatever. So I'm going back through each PO that was created and matching it with a contract that we have. It's not as simple as I'm trying to make it sound. But hopefully next time, you know, I'll be able to send you guys an email to kind of let you know where I am and then we can discuss it next time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can put, so we're going to put the budget on an upcoming agenda. It's just there's a little bit of due diligence to do regarding outstanding obligations. So the board will weigh in on our budget for the fiscal year. But just so everybody knows why, it's a little bit delayed.
But we haven't, since the fiscal year just started, July 1st, we haven't expended anything from this fiscal year yet, right?
I don't think so, but that's what Allison's saying is that there's some existing contracts that cross fiscal years. And she's not quite clear on what's been spent and what hasn't been spent out of the outstanding obligations. You know, is there money that carried over from last year? We don't really know. So she's doing homework on that and then we'll have a clearer picture.
Yeah, I want to take this as like an opportunity to get it all sewn up so we know exactly which contracts have been paid in full, which fiscal year carried into which fiscal year, and be able to start 2021 with a clean slate and know where everything is.
And that should be the case, Cheryl? Because we haven't taken any votes to expend any money from this calendar year?
Except we, I'm sorry, we did vote to, for the Master Plan Implementation Committee up to the 2,500, right?
Yeah, the Master Plan Implementation. So from the planning board budget, we haven't taken any votes. But I think it's important for us to know if there were contractual obligations that might end up spilling over into this fiscal year for one reason or another. And just make sure we have all of our house in order before we decide what to do next. But Allison and Tim will present to the planning board a budget recommendation for us and sort of a report on last year's budget and where we are and.
Can I just, can I just provide some background too? When we put our budget request in for the $50,000 for the planning board, I did get an email from the town administrator asking if the board had targeted what those funds might be used for. And I had replied that what we had spoken about was possibly design guidelines for Milton Village and continued work in East Milton. So just for context, Allison, and when you talked with Tim, that's what we represented when that budget went forward in our request.
All right, thank you. That's helpful.
Can I ask you a question too? I'd like to get some idea about what the process is on this potential 40R for East Milton. We've talked about this for a thousand years. And I'd like to see that, you know, I mean, are we filing an application? Is there some sort of, you know, contract provision that says we're going to do the start for the DHCD process to see if the site's eligible, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Or are we just going to be talking about this till, you know, retire?
Well, I think that's why we're looking for an update from Judy Barrett. And she had one meeting with the group, because as we know, it just expanded the group of this committee. And she wanted to have a meeting with them and kind of formulate their schedule and our next steps. But she wasn't prepared to do that yet. So hopefully at our next meeting, we can get an update from her on exactly what we're doing next.
Because I'm getting to the point where I'm just going to apply for it myself.
I am concerned if we don't meet.
Which I've done before. I could do it again.
I am concerned that if we don't meet again until September, that we have some time where we won't have an update on that. So if we could at least get a schedule update via email between, you know, if, if we in fact don't meet until August 27th, I'd love to see a schedule update. Because I do think property owners and residents in East Milton are curious what's happening. And I think if we can provide a schedule, you know, of what we're doing and when we think it'll be concluded, I think that would be helpful for everyone.
Agreed. So Allison, you can work with Judy on that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Sure, and then I have a.
I interrupted your update, sorry.
That's okay, so I just have a couple more. The Little Sprouts, or otherwise known as 919 Blueville Ave, site plan approval decision has been fully drafted and embedded by town council. You can expect that in the next day or so, so you guys can review it. And then I did, I'm, just to make sure you saw it, I know that you touched on it, April, but you guys saw that Peter Mullen had, I'm not sure Kathleen, if you had a chance to see it, but where, I just want to let you know that he had forwarded some, a couple of minor language-related issues for Article 2 and 3. And I think that is all that I have to share with you at the moment.
Anybody have any questions for Allison or Julia?
Nope, other than thank you.
Sure. Okay, so now we will move on to Citizens Speak. And our meeting attendees will need to raise their hand in order to be called on. And if you click on Participants and you see yourself, you should see the option to raise your hand at the bottom of the box. So we will give it a minute.
April, if I may, there's one that seems to be a call-in, so you might have to ask that call-in if they want to speak.
Okay.
Allison, could you stop sharing your screen so I can put the instructions up?
Oh, sure, hold on. How do I do that? Okay, hold on, stop sharing, good.
There is one telephone caller from a phone number, the last three digits of like they are 7, 7, 0. If you would like to speak for Citizens Speak, feel free to.
No.
And the instructions for how to raise your hand are on the screen.
Where?
Oh, you don't want them spraying, cleaning up. You know what, maybe you don't want to park here. You go.
I do not see anybody.
We're going to park up.
I don't see anyone raising their hand, so I think we can move forward. One last chance for Citizens Speak? No hand raises? Okay, so now we'll move on to our public hearing for 193 Central Ave, the Goddard School. This is continued from June 11th. And I'll ask Allison to give us an overview before we invite the applicants to speak. But again, I just want to make one more note that anyone that called in or is following this meeting for 310 Granite Ave, Euro Auto House, that application has been withdrawn and we will not be hearing it tonight. So now I will turn it over to Allison on 193 Central Ave.
Thank you. Background, on June 11th, 2020, Attorney Marion McGettrick presented on behalf of client Strong Fundamentals Corporation, doing business as the Goddard School LLC, a project and early education childcare center to be located at 193 Central Avenue. This site plan approval application was filed June 1st, 2020. The public hearing for 193 Central Avenue opened on June 11th, 2020. And an embutters meeting attended by the Planning Department staff was conducted onsite July 1st, 2020. Subsequent to the public discussion and neighborhood engagement, the applicant submitted an amended site plan application on July 9th, 2020. This amended site plan application was forwarded down to town departments, the Shade Tree Committee, and Historic Commission for additional feedback. Planning Board Authority, this project is covered by the Dover Amendment outlined in Massachusetts General Lodge Chapter 40A, Section 3, that exempts agricultural, religious, and educational corporations from certain zoning restrictions. Dover Amendment projects may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard-size lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. The planning board may reject any plan that fails to meet standards for health, safety, welfare, and amenities appropriate for future occupants of a building or the adjacent properties or neighborhood. Requirement for Planning Board action, ordinarily, the planning board has 65 days from the filing of a site plan approval application to hold a public hearing and decisions must be rendered within 35 days of a public hearing. However, the Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 told these timeframes. Town Department review, the applicant and the planning board requested the town engineer review the amended site plan application. July 20th, Chris Trudell, town engineer, clarified that the stormwater management plan submitted by the applicants to the town for review is not a requirement of site plan approval for this project as the proposal is to clear limited portion of the existing developed site. The town engineer did provide the name of three third-party engineers should the applicant elect for third-party peer review of the stormwater management plan. The town engineer does not feel that a traffic, a full traffic study is necessary at this time, requesting that the site plan approval conditions include language outlined in the Goddard School memo dated July 8th, 2020, stating that specifications to work with the town of Milton to install time-restricted right-turn-only signs either on-site or in the town's right-of-way if deemed necessary, as well as maintaining trip statistics, which will be available to the town. Should the trip statistics demonstrate a higher-than-expected impact, the Planning Department with consultation of the town engineer requests a third-party traffic study scoped to be determined by the town departments in addition to the cost for signage and/or striping to mitigate any higher-than-expected impact should it be deemed necessary after six months of full occupancy. The Milton Historic Commission, per a letter received July 20th, I'm sorry, July 21st, 2020, has reviewed the elevation and site plans for the proposed Goddard School and is in favor and of and supports the preservation of this building as well as its present context, including the setting and landscape as viewed from Central Avenue and the corner of Columbine Road. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee has completed a site walk on July 22nd, 2020, and has made several recommendations to the applicant. The Shade Tree Committee and the applicant continue to work together to implement a mutually agreed upon plan. The Planning Department will carefully monitor compliance with the recommendations.
Hey, thank you, Allison. I'm muting Marion McGettrick, who's a representative of the applicant. Marion, is there anyone else on your team that should be shown in video or should be unmuted?
Well, my understanding was the applicant and the engineer, we're going to try to attend the meeting, so you may see them on your screen. I don't, I can't see anything, so I don't know.
So is the applicant Sunny?
Sunny Verma.
Okay.
And then the engineer's name is John Tilton.
I see him as well.
Possibly the architect Joseph Walsh, although I don't know if he was planning to attend.
He is here too. Okay.
I.
I have unmuted all of, let's see here. We should have unmuted all of those folks. If they are still muted, it's by their choice. So why don't we turn it over to you, Marion, to run through the changes that you've made since you were before us last?
Thank you. I tried to summarize the changes, not only the changes that I reflected in the site plan, revised site plan that I gave you on July 9th, but a few smaller changes that have occurred since then because I've gotten one or two additional questions from neighbors and also from members of the planning board. So I'm going to run through everything tonight, tell you where things stand on all of that information. And then I hope there'll be questions. I'm just going to start with lighting. When we met in June, the planning board asked for revisions to the lighting plan, principally that we made sure the lighting was dark sky compliant, that we reduced the freestanding lighting from 12 feet to 10 feet, the size of the poles. What the applicant has done has, is to make those changes. Any lighting, any freestanding lighting that is next to neighboring lots is designed so that it will not shine onto neighboring lots at all, special type of fixture on those lights. The poles are all 10 feet now. And in addition to that, the applicant eliminated three freestanding lights in front of the building. And the thinking, these are near Central Ave, the thinking was that there's enough light from the streetlights on Central Ave and that these lights would just add additional glare. They weren't necessary, so they've been eliminated. On July 9th, I submitted a full lighting plan that includes a photometric plan. And it is for all the lighting on the site, not just the freestanding light. So if all the lights were on at once, this, I believe that's correct, and certainly somebody from our team will correct me if I'm wrong. If all the lights are on at once, this photometric plan shows you where the light, how far the light would extend. So you have to enlarge it on your screen to see it, but it does show that there is no light extending onto neighboring properties. I had additional questions from neighbors about the spotlights. These are the lights, the only lights that would come on after the school is closed. So another provision would be that lights would be turned off about an hour after closing. And the spotlights are motion sensor lights. So they will come on if somebody moves directly under or in front of the lights. They are not on all the time. And they can be directed in whatever direction is best. So they can be directed down, back at the building, to the left, to the right. They're not going to be pointing straight out towards neighbors' houses. But the concern that a couple of neighbors had was seeing those spotlights on the plan was whether this was a light that was going to be on all the time and shining straight out towards their house. So that was the answer that I received to that question. That's, that's the summary of changes to the lighting plan.
Do we have that plan?
I think we're looking at the drainage plan.
Oh, the one you're looking at right now, I'm going to talk about now. That, that's just a plan that shows which trees are going to be removed in the, it happens to be on the drainage plan. But the purpose of this plan is to show you which trees are to be removed in the back parking lot. That was a question, I think, from you, Cheryl. And the green trees are the trees to be removed. There are nine of them.
But I'm sorry, is it possible to see the lighting plan before you move on to this, Marion? Do you have that, Allison?
Yes, it's in the submission that I gave you on July 9th. It will be the, I believe it's the last thing that's in that package. So Allison would have to scroll through that package. And yes, I think the photometric, well, I don't know, photometric plan or maybe some of the lights. It's all one package and it's all part of the submission from the 9th. It's not going to be, this was a later plan that was sent, so it's not going to be part of it.
Right, it's not in this one, right?
If you want me to talk about trees while you're looking for that, would you like me to do that or do you want me to wait?
Allison, are you close to finding it or should she go ahead?
Sorry, I had to mute myself because my dogs are fighting. Move on to the tree and I will find the lighting. It's just going to take me a minute because it's, it's not, it's easy to access because I'm not at work. Okay, so in general, the trees are shown on the landscaping plan, which is the last sheet of the site plan. The plan that we presented on July 9th, well, this plan in front of you shows that nine trees to be removed in the rear parking lot. There were 11 trees that are proposed, were proposed to be planted, new trees on this site. And what happened was, so then that plan just was sent to the Street Tree Advisory Committee. I just got their feedback, I think it was this morning or yesterday. I sent it to the engineer and I'll explain their feedback. And then I'll explain the revised plan that we have sent to you electronically, although you may not be able to pull it up right now. The advisory committee wanted, did not want all red maples along Columbine Road. They said the town has enough of those. They'd like to see some different species. They had recommendations for three trees to use, but the engineer has responded that they do not want to use those three trees because they all have either nuts or berries that drop, will drop onto the play area. And in a preschool childcare facility, they don't use that type of tree because there's a problem with the kids possibly ingesting those fruits or nuts. What the engineer suggested along Columbine Road were three, were two other trees that are on the street tree list, but they're not red maples. He suggested three American elm trees and two sugar maples. Those all come from the category of tree that the advisory committee suggested that we use. And he also suggested that in front of the building, on the outside edge of the retention pond, which incidentally is a retention pond and not a rain garden, I've been describing that incorrectly, that they would plant two river birch trees. The advisory committee wanted, I think, different tree, they wanted us to plant two trees in the middle of that. They thought that it was a rain garden. We can't do that. You can't plant trees in a retention pond. But we do, we are proposing that we would plant two river birches, which like wet conditions and they would be right near the street. So they wouldn't be quite street trees, but they would be close. So that proposal did go back to the chairman of the advisory committee, but she has not had a chance to respond to it unless she's on this meeting tonight. But I just wanted you to understand the problem with their recommendation and that we had sent a proposal back for review. So we would, you know, the, the plan for street trees would follow the recommendations of this advisory committee. And we were hoping they'll think this is a good plan, the one that we presented. But if they don't like it, the limitation that the school has is they can't plant trees that are going to drop trees, fruit or nuts. So I'm sure that with that guidance, we can reach agreement on what the trees should be. There are other, there are some other river birch trees that are going to be planted. If we, if you have the landscaping plan and you're looking at it, you'll see where they are. But I believe there's, there are two along the driveway going from the front to the rear parking lot. And I believe there's a, an evergreen tree that's going to be planted in place of the large tree in back of the. And I believe there's a, an evergreen tree that's going to be planted in place of the large tree in back of the school. That's, it's not going to be in exactly the same place because that's where a handicapped access ramp has to be located, but there will be a new tree planted there. So that's the tree summary.
I have a question on the, I have up on my screen the full set of drawings. If you haven't located it, Allison, I can screen share, but.
All right, I'll stop sharing, and do you want to bring it up?
I can, sure.
Okay.
I think, do I have, I don't know if I have the, yes, I do.
You have like a screen.
I've got it, yes.
Sorry.
Are you seeing it, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to understand, on the street trees, you can see, can you see the hand that I'm, where I'm circling?
Yes.
Okay, so these trees all along here are on Town and Milton property, correct?
Yes, it does look that way. Initially, I didn't think they were. But I think the edge of the property is, I think, they're showing the edge of the pavement there, and then they're showing the lot line, which is in back of the tree. So that's why, I mean, it does come under the jurisdiction of the town's tree committee.
Right, so these along here, right?
Correct.
So the tree that's called out to be removed is, is on the town property? Is that right?
Yes, and so the street, the, the Street Tree Advisory Committee approved removing the large apple, it's not an apple tree, it's a crabapple.
Yeah, they said that it was not, it was not doing very well.
Is that this tree?
But, and they, they agreed, as we had already shown, that we would be keeping the small crabapple, and that's still going to be true.
Okay. So one of the questions that I had too was with this tree, and you can see in gray here, the subsurface drainage structure, right? And we know, to get that structure in, I, I can't see that they can save this tree with that structure located the way it is there. And, and I, and I, I know you replied to that, Marian, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's any other way to address it. So is, can this structure be reduced in size by doing some kind of retention in the lawn over here?
Well, I mean, the engineer should answer that, but I, I believe it needs to be under the play area, but I would prefer to have John Tilton answer that. That is an area of expertise. We, I, I would point out, though, that the area that's going to be disturbed is not the entire drip circle of the tree. You're right, it may not survive, but I, and, and maybe John Tilton should address that. But my thought was, because people really wanted to try to keep it, if we can't move anything, and I think I've already sent that request back to the school, and I know they've been, they looked at it during the last month. So if it's where it is, I, is, is John Tilton here? Could he answer that?
He has himself muted. You can't unmute him, so I think he has himself muted. There we go.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it's a good question. So we, we had some difficulty placing the structure because fences or the playgrounds have foundations. So we had a tight area to get that infiltration system in. But sliding over to the left-hand side, there's a higher groundwater area there. We had a tough time fitting a system over there because where we're near the street, the groundwater is a little bit higher than is upgrading to that. So that wasn't a good spot for it either. What we, what's kind of holding in place here is a fence line too. We're going to try and see if we can slide over it, maybe do something to the fence where we position longer foundations into the ground. We didn't want the fence post puncturing the infrastructure itself on the ground, which is like 12 to 8 inches deep, 18 inches deep. But I think we'll take another look to see if we can do something with the fence, make a longer foundation pinpoint between the fence, and slide the infiltration a little more to the left and give a little more room between the drip line and the infiltration chambers itself.
I think that would be great because that, that tree is a, is a large tree. And I think it would go a long way in sort of keeping sort of the existing character. Whereas we're already changing the front with the retention basin. Retention basin and rain garden, they're not one in the same.
Nope.
You know, retention basin doesn't have the same visual appeal. And so I do think if, it will be quite noticeable if trees and, and this retention base, trees are lost and this basin goes in. I think it'll be one of the things that, you know, it's right at the front of the building, these things, which would, would change, you know, people would go by and say, what happened to, to that building, right? Or what happened to that site? So i- if that can happen, that would be great. Maybe I'll, I'll make a suggestion for you to think about with the fence. And if you thought about some kind of a grade beam where you could anchor the posts to the, to a concrete grade beam that could span further away from the, the structure, that might be a way to slide it over. So you don't have to have as many punctures through the ground.
No, I agree. We, we talked to a fence contractor, gave some ideas. We haven't heard back from him yet. That's how far we can space these apart and still be secure. We thought of also two, maybe break-in chambers in two different sections, one in each play yard, maybe. Something like that. It's a little tricky, but and separate them between the two, two playground areas. So something we'll look at in, you know, in trying to save the, save the tree best we can.
So Marian, you had been referring to that other plan. I don't know if you wanted to go back to that updated plan, which had other trees on it that were in this location, the trees that were being removed.
This plan doesn't show the trees to be removed. It shows the ones that are staying. The other plan showed nine trees in that parking area. They're varying sizes, but they're big enough that we thought they should be counted as, you know, they're not just twigs. And there's one large tree behind the building that has to be removed for the handicapped access ramp. So can April go back to that perhaps, so we can look at it again?
I'm not controlling the screen.
I can stop my share and go back to, Allison can pick up the share.
I think that's in my July 17th memo, if that's an easier way to access it. There it is. Okay. So this is, did you have a question about this plan?
Sorry, let me come back to my full view. Well, I, I just, if you could, Allison, zoom in a little bit more closely. Those, the trees that are right, thank you, these, these three trees at the top, which are, I'm sure the, the, the root balls probably extend beyond the property line, given their location pretty much on the property line, and knowing that there's a stone wall and fence there. I, I know I emailed about this too, and I, I think I brought it up at the last meeting. This proximity of these components to one another. Allison, do you want that photo? Of that location that I sent you?
We did send you a photo of the large, of the high stone wall. I just sent you that.
While she's looking for that photo, have you spoken to the, a butter to the, the north of the Central Ave end of it?
Not the one, well, I, yes, I, I've left plans, I've left letters, I've left messages. That's, that's Tony, who has the pizza shop in Lower Mills. But he has not, I've asked him if there's any concern, anything he wanted to talk about, but he has not sent any messages back to me. I'm trying to look for the.
My concern has to do with the fact that there's a lot of components so close together, Marian. And what you sent had a wood fence on top of a stone wall with a gravel right up against it, right? And so, but there's a potential here for a fair amount of disruption to, when, to build this, right? To build, to take out the trees and to cut in the drainage soil and put in the curb and paving, and then put the, the new fence in, when there, meanwhile, there's an existing fence. Were you?
This is going to connect to the existing fence. It's not going to remove it. It's not going to go in front of it. The fence is going to, in this location, is going to go on top of a short stone and concrete wall that's already there. And then, as it continues towards the back, then it will meet that really old stone wall, which is a high wall. So there will be no fence where the old wall is. And then, once you get beyond the old wall, then we'll resume with the fence, that's the fence that's being put up by the school.
And so that's, that's existing stone wall is owned by this property owner?
It's on the lot line. I've discussed that with the property owner. And he's fully aware, you know, of the design. He asked if we would show him, when we have a picture of it, what the wooden gate will look like that's going to go in the archway. It's not going to be a gate that opens. And so I haven't received any additional feedback from him. That's Stephen Friedman and his wife. They're on Lantern Lane. They're at the end of a long lot that goes way back, but this is along their lot line.
So you haven't been able to find the photo?
Or do you want the?
It's in the stuff we got on the.
Right.
Allison at 9:22 this morning.
Yeah. Cheryl, is this not the photo? I'm sorry, I thought it was it.
Oh, wait, we're seeing the plan.
We're seeing the plan, right.
Oh, you can't see that? Oh, crap. All right, hold on. Yeah, I don't know why you can't see. I'm looking at a photo that Cheryl sent to me this morning. I don't know how to.
Can you, maybe you have to stop your screen share and pick a different view. I'm not sure if there's a better way to do that, but. Now, when you select screen.
Now, can you see it?
Now you can, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so this is what has concerned me. I can't really, you can't see my cursor. But if you start on the right there, and you see wood on top of stone, that's kind of a rough wall. And then you come to some trees that are on top of the wall, and then you go back to the trees that are sort of next to the wall, and that's where this new soil is getting cut in, and, but the topography is rising. So if you envision a fence, will it interfere with the tree in the middle? You know, how will it look riding along top of an uneven wall like that? It's just aesthetically, I think there's, there's a lot of consideration to happen here yet. And, and that's why I've asked about that direct to butter because, you know, there's definitely consideration for the aesthetic of that wall from their side as well. And certainly, those are some pretty large trees at the back, so the character of the back. If it's actually so far back that people aren't using that part of their property, maybe that part's less important. But the part towards the street is something that we all see that's visible.
So I'm not sure, I understand what the concern is. So the, the fence is going to continue with the, with the school fence in a similar fashion, and the engineer maybe would address that better than I would. If, if there is a tree right on top of the wall, that would have to be removed. That looks like a small tree. He can address that. I can't.
I just, speak for a second. So that, that street view, that's an old, old view of the street. Marian, you, the photos I sent you yesterday, it's, it's colored. I have a black and white. That, that is not how it exists now. There's a fence runs all the way back, probably another 50 feet or so. I have a black and white here that, I don't know who, I think the butter put it up. It's a brand-new fence, and it runs.
Okay, is that what was in your memo, Marian, that fence?
Yes, I sent a picture of that to you.
Okay.
That's, that gives a good picture of what it's going to look like. And there's no trees to be cut. He might have already cut them down. And then when the wall jumps up to six feet high, there's no fence on top of that. Then the wall ends back down ground level. That's where we pick up the other, our fence for the school.
All right. Thank you for clarifying, because it was confusing to me what that photo was taken, where it was taken, if it was just an example fence. But that's actually the, the way it is now.
Correct.
Okay.
Marian, why don't you continue?
Okay. We've already talked a bit about the infiltration pond incorrectly called a rain garden by me. But anyway, so the reason that this pond was created was because the original plan called for an, for a chamber to collect storm water underneath an area that has large rocks and trees that's in front of the building. And nobody, the neighbors, the planning board, and even, I think, the applicants really wanted to excavate there because it was going to be very difficult, and it was going to remove a feature of the landscaping in front of the building. So the, we went back, the engineers went back and studied their stormwater drainage system, and instead, they created an infiltration pond in circular area that's within the curving driveway in front of the building. Now, there's the pond. There has to be a fence around it because, because it, there has to be a safety fence because this is a school for small children. But there's landscaping all around the edges of the fence and the pond. And now, we are making the additional proposal to add two trees to the edge of the pond closer to Columbine Road. Those would be two river birch trees. So it's certainly not going to be the same. It's basically, it's an open area now with grass, basically. There's a couple bushes in the center. There will be an infiltration pond instead. There will be landscaping around the edge, and then there will be two new trees providing the, the Street Tree Advisory Committee is one who told us they wanted us to put a tree, there are two trees. They wanted them in the middle, which there can't be, so we suggested this as an alternative. The rest of the stormwater management plan has remained the same, but because of this change, the engineer did all the calculations over again to make sure that there would be no storm water flowing off this site after the changes that are being made. And the principal changes are the addition of a parking lot to the rear, a connecting driveway to the rear parking lot. Those will be paved. And then in the front area, there's ledge under that parking lot. So I'm not sure whether it really absorbs water, but that will be paved when this project is all done. So for those reasons, it seemed wise to do a full stormwater management plan and to do all the calculations to make sure, to, to look at where there should be drainage structures in the rear, which we've already discussed. Some of the neighbors have told me, and what John Tilton said is correct from their experience, that there's, that it's fairly wet in back there when there are storms. And so you have to be careful where you put the drainage structures so that they'll be effective. So that's kind of a quick summary, but that's what the stormwater drainage system is all about. I've reviewed with engineering whether this is actually required for this site. It's not required that we submit a full plan and have it approved. I think it was a good idea to do it, and we did do it. And it's also been reviewed again with this revision. So that's, you know, there is the possibility of slightly moving one of the back drainage structures that would help save that tree. I know that John Tilton already talked to me about trying to do that, and if it's, if it's possible to do it, we will. So that's my summary. Any questions on the stormwater drainage?
Nope. Allison, do you mind bringing the plan back up just for reference? I have no questions. Does anybody on the board have any questions about stormwater or drainage?
Cheryl, I'm going to un, wait, which one? Can you, what are you guys looking at right now?
The picture of the fence.
Okay, I have to stop sharing, and I'll bring it back up. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Had it up there. I was the only one looking at it, I guess. Can you guys see it now?
Not yet. We see all the faces.
Yeah, we're not on screen share.
You're good-looking people. All right.
I have it here on my screen, right here.
There you go. Now, is that better?
There we go.
Right.
Okay, Marian, I.
Yeah, you can use this one, I guess, as long as, I hope it's on the up-to-date one. Yes, it is. So I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is the 7:23 one.
Yeah, and this also shows the trees to be removed, which is fine. Were there questions about the drainage?
I didn't hear any, so why don't you continue?
So, I mean, just one point. You can see there's a drainage structures, and they're substantial in the back. They're going to be underground, so they will continue. They're going to be underground, so there will continue to be lawn in the back, just as there is now. It will still look green, and it will have better drainage than it does now. So, uh, you know, it's a little formidable looking when you look at the plan, but those are underground structures. So, if you'd like, I can move on to fencing. We've talked about that a bit.
Yep.
Um, the school has proposed a six-foot fence, beginning at the rear corner and extending all around the lot line, all the around, all the way around the back, until it joins that old stone wall that we talked about, that's a high stone wall. And that will be a six-foot fence. Now, we've sent you the specifications for the fence. It, it, it is a, um, it, it's a form of plastic, but it looks more like wood, and that was chosen. It's been used at some of the other Goddard schools, and it's been very, a very good fence. But also, neighbors had asked if we could try to do a more high-quality fence, if it were going to be plastic, not a shiny white vinyl, but something that looks more like wood. And you can see there are examples of different colors here. Um, I don't know whether the first one, which does kind of look like the color of the existing fence, is the one that they're planning to use. We could certainly ask that question. Um, but the style of the fence will be as shown here, and it will be this type of fence. These are the specifications. Uh, the current fence along Columbine Road is a six-foot fence. So, to get some idea of how it will look, I mean, it's going to be as high as the fence that's there now. The neighbors who live across the street have indicated that they like the, the height of that fence. It gives them some privacy, or it gives the occupants of 193 Central Ave some privacy. It worked for weddings and events like that. So, this is as close as we could get to what's there now. That fence is not in great condition, and it does have to be taken down. In addition, there will be a six-foot fence around the rear of the parking area in the back. And the reason for this is it will directly block any car headlights that will be on after dark, in the morning, early, or in the evening, if it's dark in the evening, as they come in. Those rear parking spaces will be generally used by employees. They're not as likely to be spaces that people will be pulling in and out of frequently. Um, but the headlights were a concern to neighbors to the rear, and that's the solution that we proposed, is that there would be a six-foot fence also around that parking area. So, there's a double fence here. You can see that in the back of this, um, plan. The other fence that we've shown you a picture of is the safety fence that's proposed to go around the retention pond, and that is a black metal fence. So, you don't have a picture of that in front of you, uh, but it would have been with the spec, I sent it to you the same time I sent the specifications, so if you want to look at that picture, maybe...
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. Um, so, that's, that's a description of all the fencing. Um, a school has to have, uh, complete, secure perimeter fencing. Um, that's why a gate has to be put in the old stone wall, because there's a nice archway there, but it has to have a gate, and the gate is not gonna be a gate that opens. It's very important that everything be secure, and the neighbors have mentioned that as well. So, um, there is, in addition, a low fence would be a four-foot fence of some sort that would go directly in back of the playground equipment as a further safety measure to keep the kids in, within the playground when they're out there. Um, and those were all described in our original application, but I, I didn't have specifications for the fencing at that time. So, these, these specs, this, this brochure that you're looking at from the fencing company is the type of fence that they plan to use. Any questions on fences?
Danny?
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering, um, the, the black fence, um, that is, is that, um, i- is that to protect them from going, to protect the children from going into the, um, water basin?
You have to have a fence around a, a body of water, whether, it's a good idea, anyway, but where there are young children, you have to have it.
Is, is it, um...
They're not gonna be out there playing or anything, but the school requires...
Is it closed enough so that children won't, won't, like, get their heads stuck, or, or pets won't end up in there, and then you won't get...
Well, I guess I'd ask John Tilton, I don't know if Joseph Walsh is here. Um, these, the Goddard School, um, organization oversees a lot of the features of this sort of thing that go into their schools. And so, they, they use fencing that works for young children. However, on that particular question, I don't know the answer specifically. Does anybody have an answer?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen it before. These fences, yeah, it's, they're meat billing code. I mean, you probably could put a hand through there, but they're, I think they're less than four inches, or maybe three inches in separation, so you can't get a head in there. I mean, an older child, a teenager, probably could jump over the fence. Um, but the idea is to keep younger children out, out of the fence, and just deter people from going inside of it. Um, but the intention, the infiltration pond will not have water. It's during major rainstorms like today.
Yeah.
Maintain the water, but then it'll drain out slowly, it'll be gone, you know, hopefully in a couple hours.
What's the surface of it? Is it grassy?
Yes, it's gonna be grass bottom. It'll have grass in it, and some, um, we have a lot of plants on the outside. We're proposing, um, some bushes and some fountain grasses to cover, you know, for additional landscaping. Inside, it'll be just grass inside. And it should be maintained properly, so no weeds or anything like that.
I, I didn't know.
Danny, go ahead.
Well, I, 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 I really like the look of both of the fences, as, as long as we have assurance that, that it's really safe for children and the neighbors in the area, and any, you know, I worry about, I, I'm a dog walker, and, you know, I worry about people's pets and stuff ending up in there, and then how could they get them out? And anyway, um, as long as we have some assurance that it's safe. Um, and then, I was wondering if the neighbors were happy with these fence options that you've shown us tonight.
Um, the, this, the specific question about the quality of the fence, um, came from the Atwoods, who live at 88 Columbine Road, and I sent them the new description, and they've indicated that they're very happy with the information that I've been able to provide. They haven't said they have a problem with it. Um, I've sent, however, I've sent this information to other neighbors, all of the ones who've given me email addresses, and I haven't heard anybody, you know, I've, I've encouraged people to come back to me with any concerns, and I have not heard any.
So, we have, um, just for your reference, Danny, I don't know if you can see this list, but we do have a number of people that are listening, uh, recognize at the conclusion of the presentation. So, if, and on that fact, they're gonna have their opportunity to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just to move on, um, to elevations. You asked for an elevation plan at the original hearing. Um, the architect has provided an elevation plan, which was sent to you a while ago, and I think I resubmitted it in July. This, the reason for an elevation plan, first of all, is to see how the building looks from the outside, and also because there has to be an enclosure for the elevator on this building, and there are two dormers that are gonna allow ventilation into the classrooms. So, we took these elevation plans to the historical commission, and we asked them to review the plans, um, and to advise us as to whether they were consistent with the general architecture of the building, whether they were causing a problem. We want the building from the front to look very much the way it always has, and they seem to be supportive of the design. Um, the elevator enclosure is towards the rear, and the dormers are balanced on each side of the building. So, you can look at that. I don't know if anyone has questions about it.
Um, Allison, if you don't have that, you can, I have it on my screen, the elevation. I do want to point out one thing.
Mm-huh.
Um, so hopefully you can see it, right? Um, so this would be the elevation that's calling the rear, the north, so this would be facing the, um, the, a butter where the fence is, correct?
Um, well, yeah, the rear of the property. Um, not the, it doesn't face Columbine Road, but you can see it from Columbine Road, but from the rear, yes.
Right.
Yeah, that's where the parking lot is now.
Right.
That's the side that, so, that's the parking lot.
Right. So, here's the, that elevator shaft. My, my, um, the height is determined by the requirements of the elevator, but a comment I do have here, um, is that, uh, this is called out to be, um, these are the condensers for the air conditioning, and it's called out to have an OSHA guard rail, which is just a pipe rail. And, uh, my feeling is that should have screening, um, and it can, there is screening for this purpose for mechanical equipment, um, so that, um, it's more, um, fence-like, if you will, like solid fence-like. Um, and I'd, I'd like to suggest, and if it needs to have louvers for the air movement, I'd like to suggest that that replace, uh, the OSHA guard rail that's called out here. And in fact, OSHA guard rail's yellow.
Oh.
So, I don't, I don't think it's attractive myself.
Is the architect here? Or if not, um, we would...
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, what, what?
Yeah, I, I, unfortunately, when you have equipment closer to, um, than 10 feet from the edge of a roof, you have to have some type of guard.
But you can have it be a screening, uh, which provides this, the same, a function, can you not?
Yes.
Right.
So, you, you're talking about putting a screen, if there has to be a guard rail, too, in back of the guard rail, so you're not looking at a yellow guard rail.
From this, from the outside, correct.
Right? So, can we do that, Joe?
Yeah, we, we can do something similar to, um, what the, the site fencing is. Um, we've done that before, um, a vinyl fence that's four feet high, um, or, or three and a half feet high. Um, that's semi-solid, um, but, so you can't see the equipment.
And just, uh, while we're here, in case anyone wanted to see the elevation, since I do have them on my screen here. Um, so this is the, um...
That's...
Oh, you got the right side, the east side. So, this is Central Ave side?
Yes.
That's the, um, where the gravel parking lot is now, that side.
Okay. All right, so you can see here the shaft also for the elevator, right? Okay. And then, um...
It's the front, okay.
Yeah. Here's the front, right? Okay, so, and then the, um, facing the lawn and playground areas, right?
Yes.
So, this is just the same side, but, but this shows the wall down below. Here's what it looks like.
That's where we're excavating, around the basement.
And so, these are the new louvers for the dormers, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. We did get questions at our meeting about whether the doors in the rear are gonna stay looking the same, and they are.
And that would be these doors, Marion?
Yes.
Yeah, tho- those doors, um, right now, there are pairs of doors that are...
Yeah.
There are doors that each are, um, two foot four wide, so we're replacing it with a single three-foot-wide door with a side light, but, um, you know, with muttons similar to what's there. And we're gonna keep the, the existing fan light that's, uh, over the doors.
And then, um, the new door here is, uh, in, in character with the, with the existing doors. This is one of the things that we were talking about before, right? All of these new doors.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, my only, um, comment had to do with this, so, OSHA rail on the elevations now. And actually, here you can see it as well, on that side.
Does anybody else have any questions about this? Anybody on the board? No? Okay, Marion, let's...
Okay, on to, um, traffic. Um, so, in our updated submission in July, we provided, um, four tables. It took a while to produce these. Um, I asked the Goddard Corporation to look at, um, information from four different schools, all of which were a little bit larger than this school is going to be, and to take a snapshot of the, the trips to the school over, uh, the full day, from when the school opens to when the school closes at 6:00 PM. And so, you have four bar graphs in your materials. Each of those is from a separate school, and then the graph shows you how many sibling pairs or groups attend the school. It shows you the, um, population of the school, and how many people were absent that day. So, it just gives you a general feeling, as you look at, at the, the bar graphs are divided into 10-minute intervals until you get towards the middle of the day, how many people actually are coming in and leaving the school during each of those 10-minute intervals. And then, and looking at the four different schools, you see somewhat, you see similar patterns, but as, you know, it varies a bit with the size of the population of the school. But we, this is the best we could do to project what we believe will be the trip patterns going in and out of this school. And it's fairly conservative, because this school is going to be a little bit smaller. I believe the average, the average enrollment at this school is gonna be about 120. It's less than what I said in the original application, and the full capacity will be no more than 140, but the school will never have its full capacity. Probably won't have its average capacity for between two and three years after it opens. It takes that long to build up the enrollment at a new school. So, um, we also asked Goddard, um, to provide a general description of how a school, how these Goddard school operate, uh, schools operate, because they all follow the same rules. They all require parents to park on-site and to walk their children into the school. Um, and there is no idling of vehicles, um, on-site. And, in general, the patterns of, um, more intense and less intense trip generation are, is the same at each of the schools. So, she provided, um, a summary of what those patterns are generally, and I've given that to you in my materials. Um, I tried to, um, I provided a memorandum to go with these tables, to try to explain how we visualize the traffic patterns at the site, uh, knowing that in the morning, even though there's no normal traffic right now, in the morning on Central Ave, there'll be more traffic going towards Boston, and in the late afternoon, there would be more traffic possibly coming back into town, going towards, um, Brook Road. So, as people leave the site, whether it is morning or evening, they're going to want to turn right. They're not gonna want to cross a lane of traffic. It's gonna be more difficult to do that. And to approach the site, they're going to want to approach it from the Boston direction, or, you know, from the, um, Elliott Street direction, because they can make a turn right into the site. We can put our own signs up, of course, at the school. This town can also put signs up that say, "No right turn at certain hours." And if the traffic commission recommends that, then it should be done. We didn't want to independently say that it should be done without the town determining that. Um, and, and then, um, I also think that after the school is in operation, it's, it's a good idea to review this again, and to see what kinds of signage or marking might be important to put in place. So, those recommendations that we meet with the traffic commission, um, they only recommend this, the select board has to approve any changes, um, that we do that after the school. It could be, you know, before the school is, is, the site is prepared, but it should also be after the school opens. That's all in my memo. Um, I know that, um, Allison talked to me about whether you might ask the, that, for a deposit of $1,000, to be placed in a fund for a year, in case there were some traffic markings or signs that needed to go up, that the school would reimburse the town for. Um, and so, I discussed that with the applicants. That's poss, I don't know if that's what you're thinking of doing or not. Um, and I guess I would say that, I think I've seen Allison's memo, or maybe you mentioned it, um, if the trip generation is substantially different from what we're projecting, and it would be pretty surprising, given the fact that this school is smaller, and we had four schools to use as examples, and the owners already operate a school in Watertown, and are very familiar with the way the trips take place at that school. But if it were, then you might want to look at whether you have to study this more. We'd certainly go back and talk to the traffic commission, and see whether there were other changes that might be necessary. That was about the best we could do to give you a clear idea of traffic, but we do think, I do believe that the actual trip data from other schools is good data, and is better than some of the data that you would get from standard traffic tables, um, for this use.
So, um, Allison, do you mind just reviewing for us your conversations with the town engineer, and what his...
Sure. So, um, originally, when, when I spoke to Chris, we weren't sure, um...
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do you mind just telling everyone who Chris is? I think you're...
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, Chris Trudell, he's the current town engineer. We were trying to figure out how we could use the data that was provided to make sense of what an outcome would be should the town find that this, for whatever reason, that there's more trips generated in peak hours. So one of the things that we had discussed was what the cost would be to put up additional signage or potentially have to do some striping. But I went back and looked at what we had, the decision that we made for 919 Blue Hill Ave. And what we had indicated, and I, and I spoke with the town engineer about this. Was that we wrote, you know, that right within the site plan approval decision. And we kept it open-ended that, you know, the applicant was, you know, responsible for any significant impact. Especially where, you know, for that particular, I'm sorry, my hounds of holler. Were the, that where that site was a little bit different than, than this site. We felt, and then I reflected that in my own board memo, that we kind of kept it open-ended that this was a topic that would be reopened for discussion after the site had been opened. You know, at, you know, occupancy for six months. So that if the traffic counts were higher and that impact demonstrated the need for new signage or new striping, that we would have the ability to go back and get it from now. So it would be a cost to the town, it would, you know.
It would be a cost to the applicant. So the, the thing that's different in this case is that they're, they have Little Sprouts traffic study. And six months after occupancy, we required them to go back and evaluate that traffic study and make sure the estimates were in fact realized. And if they are not realized and they exceed their original estimates after occupancy, they have to, they have 90 days to figure out how to mitigate the impacts at their own expense, or they're no longer in compliance. The difference here is that this project came around a little later. And it was the applicant's opinion that they were unable to get an appropriate traffic study done because of the impacts of COVID. And the town engineer, as I understand it, Allison, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but he agreed that if we tried to do a traffic study now, it wouldn't be accurate because the traffic counts are so much lower than they ordinarily would be. It was his opinion that the estimates that were provided by the applicant were sufficient. But that we should take the same approach and have the applicant monitor their to the site and their parking on-site, and then six months after occupancy, turn that into the town. And again, if there were, if there were some reason to believe that the actual estimates exceeded what they expected, that they would be required to mitigate those within 90 days at their own expense, or again, they would be no longer in compliance with their permit.
That's correct.
Does anybody from the board have questions, comments, or thoughts about traffic? Ben?
I was wondering if in, let's say, two years from now, because let's, let's say because of COVID-19, things, things are going to be slowly increasing traffic. And in two years, we see the actual impact. What can the neighbors do at that point? Where would they bring their concerns at that point to seek any mitigations or, or traffic assessment?
So they, any resident is free to request the traffic commission to look at any traffic issue. So if there was a resident in this area that had concerns about this particular area resulting from the daycare or something else, they would go before the traffic commission, who would make recommendations to the town on how to improve if they felt as though improvement was necessary. The challenge, though, is the applicant will be occupying the site and still have their permit in hand, and we can't go back, you know, over any period of time. So if we wanted to include a provision, a condition to this permit, we would have to define at what point that period would be. Just like we did with Little Sprouts. But, you know, if something should happen two or three years from now, it would really be for the town to decide whether or not we as a community wanted to resolve it. We can't go back to the applicant endlessly.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't think it's two-year, you know, a long period of time is, is fair. I mean, there's all kinds of changes in population and all kinds of other things that change traffic over time. I know that here, we've, you know, gone to the traffic commission any number of times to talk about traffic movement through East Milton. You know, on Belcher Circle and all that sort of stuff. So, you know, that's, that would be what the, you know, the neighbors could do in a few years if it turns out that, you know, the movement isn't the same. I mean, we kind of remember, you got to remember that this has been a club and had people coming in and out of it all the time when it was active. And then, of course, you know, a somewhat less than successful wedding venue. But, you know, that's always, that was traffic, the traffic was an issue, parking was an issue when they came before the zoning board a couple of years ago for the special permit.
Okay, any questions, Marion, on traffic? And if not.
I do want to say one more thing about that, which is that this school really, we had this school has told me repeatedly that they want to be a neighborhood school. They are, they will want to know if neighbors are having a problem and that they'll want to work on it with the school. Of course, you can go to the town. Of course, you can go back to the planning board in some, some fashion, maybe, but you certainly go to the traffic commission. But the first stop, I hope, will be the Goddard School and its administration. The applicants are the owners, and one of them will be on-site all of the time after the school opens. So you've met, or at least some of the neighbors have met the people who are going to be running this school. You've met them. And it will continue to be that way.
I have one suggestion, and that's if a couple of years down the road, there, after COVID, there, if there is a check on, or if there are problems with traffic that are definitely associated with the operation, one suggestion might be something similar to what we talked about with Little Sprouts, which is to require staggered pickup and drop-off hours. Because it spreads the traffic out.
Well, I just want to point out that that's what the school does all the time.
But it's not a requirement necessarily?
It's a standard feature.
Alright, so, so you, so you would be okay then with us putting that as a requirement in the site plan approval?
I know, you described how the school operates. It doesn't set a start time and a stop time. People come when they want, when they want to go to work. It's also going to offer half-days, which most of the other Goddard schools don't. So we already do that. If you try to set specific schedule, that would just, that would mean that people wouldn't be able to choose when they came. I, I don't understand how that would work with this school because they don't have a specific start time. They're not like a public school. Everybody doesn't have to be there at 8 o'clock. People start coming at 7:00, and you can see from the trip generation statistics, it tapers off after 9:00. Some people still show up at 10:00 or 10:30.
Well, we've had applications before us for Little Sprouts being one, but other uses too. And if it's represented to us that there's a certain schedule, but it's not in any way part of the record of what if in the future that schedule's not being met and it's not part of our decision, then there's no recourse to having it go back to what was represented to us during the application.
We've given you the trip generation tables. We've told them that that's a projection. And you've said to me, to us at this hearing, that if something substantially different from that ends up happening, that then we would have to take certain measures to, to address whatever problems might be created by that. That's the best I can tell you at this point. The school's certainly not in operation.
Well, we're, we're requiring for Little Sprouts, which is a similar type of school, that they commit to what they told us was going to be their pickup and drop-offs being staggered. It doesn't mean that it's a start time or a stop time, but it's a staggered. And so I think if, if we made that requirement there, then the board might want to consider whether we have an opportunity for that either initially here or down the road.
I'm not comfortable limiting, I'm not comfortable telling a school how they have to operate. I'm certainly willing to say, like we did with Little Sprouts, that if it turns out that the traffic isn't the way it's supposed to be working in, in, in six months or something like that, that they have to do, they have to address it. But I, I'm not comfortable telling a school when they have to, how many people have to drop off at what time.
We just did it with Little Sprouts.
We actually did.
I haven't seen the decision.
Yeah, I haven't seen the decision, but we did vote the, we did vote that.
We did, we did vote that provision.
But it's a different school. And it is a new building. This is not.
Excuse me, what I would ask, that we continue with the presentation, and then we hear from the we as a board and discuss potential questions, further questions and potential conditions.
And we certainly will stay with our description, which is people don't come at the same time. But anyway, let's go on. Just quickly. Under capacity, I think I mentioned already, this capacity of the school from our original filing has been reduced from 160 to 140. The average enrollment from our original filing has been reduced to, it's going, we expected to be about 120 rather than 140. So we've reduced the size. And then the last thing, I just wanted to quickly summarize, and I'm, hopefully we'll hear from neighbors tonight, but it's, the site planning process has facilitated communication with neighbors, and it's given us the opportunity to meet with neighbors to, to know them. We began by sending a letter to Allabutters within 300 feet at the time of the first application. After the first hearing, any neighbors who participated in the hearing were contacted. I contacted them. I also met with some of them on-site. And took, we walked around the site, viewed the site plan. On July 1st, as Allison has mentioned, we had a site walk, a site visit. We sat down and reviewed the plans and discussed among ourselves any issues that were of concern. To that site walk, all neighbors nearby, not just of Butters, were invited either by email or with hand-delivered letters. And then after that meeting, anyone who'd given me email addresses, I've continued to send updated information to. Including the submission on July 9th. That entire package went to any neighbors who had provided emails. And as you know, we had a meeting with the historical commission. We've just now been having, I've been working out the street tree plan with the street tree advisory committee. That pretty much summarizes the contacts that we have had with neighbors since this application was filed.
Great, thank you. Does this conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay, so what I would like to do now is move to the members of the public who have joined us. And I would ask again if you could please raise your hand in the Zoom function, if you would like to speak, and we'll recognize people as we see them. And I wonder, Allison, would you mind discontinuing your screen share, and maybe Mike Lynch can put up the instructions again on how to raise your hand in case anyone doesn't know how to do that?
Here we go.
Thank you. Now, one phone caller is no longer with us, so we don't have to unmute them. Do you see a number of people that I think may be of Butters? I don't see anybody raising their hand as an, out of an abundance of caution. I'm just going to unmute everybody, and if you are struggling with the raise hand function, please just speak. And I'm not hearing from anybody. Nobody's getting any emails or anything, are they? Okay, so everybody is allowed to speak. And it's unmuted, they would like to be, and we're not hearing from anybody. So I'm going to take this as a sign that the public does not have anything to say. Again, the best opportunity to speak is to raise your hand so we can recognize you. But I'm seeing no one, and I'm unmuting everybody, so I guess we will now move on to the board. Anybody want to share their thoughts on what we heard this evening?
So should we move to close the meeting, or should we?
I think maybe we should discuss first and then give the public one more chance.
Yeah.
Just because I do see a number of people who've called in some names that I recognize as of Butters, or at least from the neighborhood, and I want to make sure if they want a chance to talk, that they get it.
April?
Yes.
I would like to thank the owners and Marion and the team for responding to all the comments. I know that I made a number of requests in both email and in meetings, and I appreciate the follow-up, Marion, the detailed follow-up. And I think you've addressed, you know, all of them, you know, to the extent that you can. There's a couple of things that are inconsistent with, in the drawings now and in what you've presented, so one of the things was the fence, like I was looking at, the drawings still call out for a black vinyl fence. And so I, I just would like if we need to follow up either in the decision or in memo or someplace, what's carrying, right? So if the drawings are not going to be updated to reflect those things. And another thing in the drawings reflective of that, in the last ones that I looked at, which were from the ninth, they still had the large monument signs in the set on, on C-5.1. And I don't want to be on the record of endorsing any sign of that size, even though we, we don't have the approval on the signage. It goes through the signs through the building department and through the select board if necessary. But I don't in any way want to be supportive of that size sign on this property. So either we say that those are not applicable here or something. Okay? And I, I would like some kind of language about the, about that tree and the drainage structure that we spoke about. Because I think you understand what the concerns are, and your engineer does, and said he would look into things further. I'm not necessarily thinking that, in my view, that you need to come back with anything on that, but I would like it to be in, in our in our decision that you've agreed to do that. And that if you can't do that, that maybe you are in touch with staff, you know, during construction or something like that. So we can evaluate whether we want that tree replaced or something else if it doesn't survive. Okay?
That's fine. Those are, the sign should not still be on there, but somehow it stayed in there. The fence is clearly not black because we've given it, but you're right. So we need to correct it in a letter. I think I mentioned it in one of my submissions. That should all be in one letter.
Right, and then, and then the other thing would be to, to capture what was, what I recommended and what was agreed to in terms of the OSHA railing?
Yes. We'll.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate the work with the Shea Tree Advisory Committee. I think I, I may have asked about that, and maybe others did too. But I, I do think I value their input and their work, and I'm glad that you reached out to them. And that you reached out to the historical commission because, again, this is a, a building that we've, you know, we've, we've lamented the fact that we've lost historic buildings in town because new uses weren't available for them. And I think there's really actually a fairly light touch on this on the outside anyway in, in preserving the building. So with that, I, my, my concerns have been addressed. And I'm supportive of closing the hearing and, and moving forward with the decision.
Thank you. Before we move on, I do see one gentleman has raised his hands, or I'd just like to acknowledge the member of the public, if the board would oblige. Or sort of interrupting our discussion, but I think that's important. Everybody fine with that? Okay, recognizing Mr. Bill Atwood, who is unmuted. There we go.
Yes, thank you. I'm just, I wanted to thank the committee members for your incredible attention to detail in the drawing. I think you looked at a lot of things and very thorough, so I thank you for that, and also thanking Marion for responding to all of the concerns. That's all.
Mr. Atwood, would you mind telling us your address? Are you in a Butter?
Yes, we're at 88 Columbine Road. We abut the property directly.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Are you happy with the fence materials that Marion's been describing?
We would have preferred wood, but we're happy with, with the compromise that she came up with.
Okay, great, thank you. That helps.
Thank you very much. While we're on the public, is there anyone else who would like to? I see no hands raised. Okay, let's go back to the board. Who else would like to speak? Kathleen, Denny, Rich?
Oh, I did have a question. Have we heard from the fire, the fire department with the confirmation of safety?
We sent the material. We sent the materials to the fire department in June. And I then, we have a new chief, he was just appointed. I emailed him again. When there's no response back, generally shouldn't. First of all, just want to point out, fire access isn't changing at this building. It's, if anything, it's improving. The circular driveway in front is emergency access only with a couple of spots just for faculty. That's not going to change. The side parking area is still going to be there. And now we're adding another parking area to the rear. So I didn't get any comments back from fire. I did ask, ask if they had any twice. So that's the report.
Allison, do you have anything further on that?
Can you hear me? Am I unmuted? Oh, am I not muted? Okay. No, we had submitted everything. Typically, you know, if there's not a significant impact to, you know, apparatus being able to access, they usually defer to engineering or Joe Pondak to give us feedback. But we didn't, we haven't heard anything and I know that it was sent to them.
Great.
Hi, this is Joe Walsh, the architect. Just relate to fire. We are sprinkling the building. It's currently not sprinkled. So we are adding additional fire protections to the building and we'll coordinate with the fire department for connections and fire alarm and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Denny, do you have comments or more questions?
You know, I, I mean, I'm happy to go into, to close the meeting. I'm just trying to think of anything that I want to hear from the public or the applicant. No, I think I'm ready.
And the public should know that at any time that you open, raise your hand, I will call on you until we close a public hearing. So I would suggest if you have something to say to raise your hand in short order. Kathleen and Rich, comments?
Nope, nothing additional.
I wanted to say thank you to Marion's clients for trying to save this building. The sad moment to see other historic buildings in the town lost. And so the opportunity to at least save the outside and the appearance of the club is a, is a great one. And I thank the applicants for considering saving of the building.
Great. And I would just mirror those same comments. I appreciate the efforts of the applicants to reach out to the neighborhood. I appreciate Allison for helping to facilitate that. And I do very much appreciate the neighborhood for their willingness to make recommendations and participate in the process and make sure that their thoughts were heard. And it seems to me that this is been a pretty reasonable and legal process since we saw you last. So thank you to everyone who participated. So I guess I give one more plea. If anybody from the public would like to speak, please raise your hand. And I'm seeing none. So then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on 193 Central Ave.
I would so move to close the public hearing on 193 Central Ave.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, then we'll do a roll call vote. Cheryl Togias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denise Swenson?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay, so I have a list here of proposed conditions, if we are so inclined to approve this application. And I'll just run through them and you can let me know if this is representative of everyone's thoughts, but the first would be that the lights are dark sky compliance, that they turn off one hour after closing and that the security lights would be motion censored. The second condition would be that the applicant continue their consultation with the shade tree advisory committee to confirm the street trees that are being proposed and that any final decisions be run by the planning director to confirm that that is an agreement between the two, that screening be added to be roof condensers to cover the OSHA guard rail. Or we can find a more eloquent way of stating that possibly, Cheryl, with yours. That the traffic be monitored by the school and that six months after occupancy, the Goddard School would report to the planning director actual traffic counts. And if the planning director determined that there was a discrepancy where mitigation would be required, that the school would have 90 days work with the town to, and come back to the planning board with proposed location. And I think that is my guess.
Did we want to put in something about the best efforts to preserve the preserve the root ball around the tree?
Yes, that the applicant will work on refining the stormwater basin. I think that's nearest Central Ave.
It's on Columbine.
Yeah, it's Columbine, okay, yes. And, and the fence around the playground with the intention of preserving the tree. And we'll have to find a way to determine what tree that is.
Yeah, it's on the, yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's a, it's a large oak tree.
Large oak.
Thirty-six inch oak. If I may, April, the, the drawings that were, there's inconsistencies in the drawings and what's been presented for fencing and for these monument signs, I would like, again, that to be part of the the condition is either that we reference an updated memo and say that that supersedes anything inconsistent on the drawings.
Yes.
Typically, that can be done. So in that memo, it would be that those monument signs are, are not been, have not been considered by the planning board, or however that should be phrased. Colors of fencing and things like that, which are different on the drawings than they are in their.
Separate memo, or should we just add two conditions that say, you know, point blank that the planning board did not endorse any signage on the plan? And then a second that just says any fencing shall be in compliance with the specifications attached to the permit.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I'm afraid that if we start producing new memos, we might.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I wouldn't mind to cover all the, or a general note in the decision too that said that if there was a discrepancy between the drawings and the memos, that the memos would carry.
Yep. That would help Joe, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And what about the screen for the vents? Do you want that as a condition?
Yes.
Oh, I
Yes.
Screen for the roof condenser? Is there a difference? Yeah. No, we have that one.
You do? Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes, Denny?
Question to your one on the lights, could, could we add something about the lights? The sensor lights should be pointed down or at the face of the building?
The sensor lights are completely movable. They are not going to be pointing out. They're adjustable and the point of that is that if they're causing an intrusion, the direction can be changed. So if you direct the direction now, you're probably right. I mean, down would probably be the way, maybe back at the building. But the point is that they can be adjusted. So I'm not sure you want to do, be too specific. So I think I've already said, and I've given you a memo, explained what those lights are, because we had questions about it, and that the direction is adjustable and that the direction will not point towards neighbor's houses. I've said that in my memo.
So what I, what I would suggest, Denny, is I tend to agree with Marion in the fact that these are supposed to be safety lights. So you know, I can't conceive of a very potential situation, but in, in a case, it could potentially be that they're not providing the safety needed if they're pointed downward in one place, not another. But what we could do is say that the the security lights shall be motion censored and positioned to eliminate impact on abutting properties.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, any final thoughts?
I'm just and where it's abutting properties, I mean, it could be that it's across Columbine Road, depending upon the fixtures. So I just think we might just say.
Neighbors?
Neighbors.
Decision to minimize intrusion on anything, any neighborhood property.
Yeah, that would be better.
Yeah, sort of more general. That's a good.
And sorry, how did we address the stagger, stagger drop-off question issue?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I did not have included as a condition.
In the six month comeback, or they're coming back in six months, let's ask for an update on how the schedule's working out. So are they getting people staggered throughout? Or are they getting, you know, 100% of the people coming between 7:30 and 8? You know, at least then we can, I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen, Marion, but at least if we get an update on the schedule, is it working out the way you thought it would in terms of pickup and drop off? And have you heard from any neighbors that's causing any problems? You know, like are there immediate neighbors? Were their driveways getting blocked or other things? Because, you know, that would be the kind of thing that we we should think about in six months, right?
So you specifically asked us to provide trip generation memo six months after opening? And that should address what you're talking about, because if it's divergent from what the, the tables we provided were showing would happen, that's, yes, that would be the response, that it's not the same as we thought it would be. But you need a specific measure, and I think the trip generation memo does that.
And your tables have times associated with trips?
Yes, it's right on the tables.
So that's the ten minute. This is a little different than the other, than Little Sprouts, because they didn't have that.
We didn't get, we didn't get anything like that for Little.
They had total trip generation ins and outs from each location and, but they didn't, they had morning peak and evening peak, but they didn't have by the hour. So I think.
They did have by the hour, actually.
This is every 10 minutes.
Every 10 minutes on the one.
They didn't have them every 10 minutes, no.
This one, every 10 minutes.
So maybe what we do is just ask you to submit them in the same format and that kind of covers what you're asking for, Cheryl. The only, the only hesitation I have is if we just ask instead for a report on drop off and pickup and how that's going and what, you know, I mean, then they have to come back and we have a discretionary decision. I don't, I don't know if that's fair to an applicant to leave it wide open like that. But I do think the point really is that we're concerned about traffic. So if they include that detail in their traffic and then it's different from what they suggested, it would be that we say you have to cure it in 90 days.
Would we suggest at that point that we would want the, we would ask the applicant to go back to the traffic commission and
Well, the traffic commission is just an advisory body. So I think what they would have to just do is work with the town engineer and the planning director.
Or write turn only sign or something like.
To develop some set of mitigation that they would bring back to us and we approve or not approve.
Okay.
And that may include the traffic commission. I don't know. Regulatory body, so they, you know, I don't know if we should necessarily add them to the decision.
No, probably not.
The town engineer and the planning director for a solution that they bring back to us.
Yeah, if you're establishing a standard that triggers a return or a consultation, I'd just ask you to use substantial difference language rather than, because I mean, I've given you four tables from four different schools. So I don't have a table for this school and I want something that makes sense in the terms of how we usually.
No, I understand that, but I, and I also understand the fact that we don't, we don't want to be putting language like we have in the past that says there absolutely has to be strict compliance or, you know, world ends.
But my concern is on both this and Little Sprouts is when it's represented to us and the neighbors that there's a certain operational way that's going to work, that that's generally following that operational, because that's what we're basing our decision on. And so that's why I do think it's important to look at it six months down the road, just to make sure it's standing out that way.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I totally agree with that. I'm just saying is that I don't want to have it, that it's got to be like, you know, so, so tied to the existing, the four schools that she's given are not this school. We wanted to get a, we want to get a report that's similar to the one she's provided for this school. So we've got the four that you've already done, you know, four you've given us from four other places. So something like that for this one in six months would be great.
And, but I, but I think to your point again, Kathleen, that if it's one car above,
Yeah.
it doesn't require additional mitigation and unlikely to. But what I suggest and what I did put in, we put into the Little Sprouts and you'll see is that we left, we left the language that said if it's substantially different or something at the discretion of the planning director.
That's great.
We hope is that if members of the neighborhood have concerns about this, they'll be in touch with the plant, they'll of course be in touch with the school, but I hope they'll also be in touch with the planning director so that when he gets that information, it's not just data, but he also would understand complaints, which might change his opinion on whether or not it needs to be mitigated.
Right, great.
Okay, so we have general agreement on these conditions? And I would entertain a motion to approve site plan approval for 193 Central Ave at Goddard School with the conditions as discussed.
I would make the motion to approve the site plan for Goddard School at 193 with the conditions discussed at this meeting.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Then I'll do a roll call vote. Denise Swenson?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Carol Togias?
Yeah.
April Anderson, yes. Thank you very much, Marion, and thank you to your clients.
Is this, is this not a situation where you want me to try to draft a decision? You're all set on doing that yourselves?
We have a good format for the decision from the one we just did, but we will draft it up and because it's coming from us, Allison, we'll talk with you about it, just to make sure all the reference points are correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And I just want to disclose, Marion, that it is taking us a bit of time to turn these around because of this virtual format. We need our planning department, I mean, our building commissioner to review, our legal counsel to review, and each member of the planning board to review. So I guess this is a nice way of saying, don't expect it tomorrow.
Well, I appreciate that. Anything you can do would be helpful, however.
We'll do our best.
And if I can help, I'm happy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, once again, 310 Granite Ave, Euro Auto House has been withdrawn, so we will skip over that agenda item. I think what we should do now is go to Old Business, Milton Village Mixed Overlay, Discussion of Boundary Amendment. And I would turn this over to Cheryl, if you're okay with that. Let us know what this is.
Sure. Allison, do you have the motion to amend that you can share? Okay, so an email was sent by a town meeting member to the town moderator with a copy to several people and, including myself, and moderator was happy that I was going to answer the questions. And so I did answer the questions, but one of the questions had to do with the boundary. And in looking at it, the question, I contacted Alan Bishop, the GIS person in the DPW and said, Alan, based on this description, will you draw a map for me? And he drew a map and I said, oh, that's not, that's not exactly what we thought we have in our description. So, oh, can you show that with a red line? So all revisions show all comments, Allison. So up under, I think, review on your up in the tabs up there at the top, we're under review. You see that on towards the left?
Hold on a minute.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Review, there you go.
All right, sorry.
Go over where it says simple markup in the middle there. You see it up at the top there, simple markup?
Yeah.
Click the arrow over to the arrow and do all markup. There you go. Thank you.
Did it change it at all?
It did, yes, because we can see what was struck out and what's added.
Okay.
So this is fairly minor, I would say, but it is a point of clarity. And so we're at this point in the process where it becomes something that we would, we would submit this to the moderator and ask him to accept it as a motion to amend. And the motion would, to amend would come from the planning board. So it simply maybe it's best if I show you the map. So share my screen, Allison.
All right, hold on. There you go.
I have to go back and find the map. Sorry, just go me. So, um, this is the, the boundary of, one of the things is that the business district crosses over into Central Ave and this overlay or does not apply to Central Ave. And the, the language in the, um, in the bylaw, per Alan's mapping of it, would have put the boundary like here, which is the midpoint between High Street and Morton Street. And that would essentially cut off part of this particular parcel. And so that parcel, this is all one parcel. So this is the location that the map that MAPC had given us early on. And it was always assumed, I guess, that the, that the map and the language, you know, sort of matched up, but apparently it did not. So this would, this would correct it to, to be this boundary, which would be the edge of this parcel. Now Kathleen has pointed out, uh, I'm gonna stop and go back to the language, um, Allison.
Okay. There you go.
So Kathleen has pointed out that this should say, um, boundary of parcel.
Of accessories parcel.
Of accessories parcel.
E dash two dash two.
So can you make that change right now on the screen? Or do you want me to follow up with that since I put this together and sent it to you?
Only because how, you know, what parcel, I mean.
You have to do it in two places. You have to do it up at the top and then in the body of that, of that, uh, we can just follow up with it, I guess, right? So.
Very simple, just put accessories right before the capital parcel.
Yeah, just put.
Accessors parcel.
Right before the word parcel in two places, just put accessories. Yeah. No, keep that what you took out.
Yeah, you don't, you're not taking.
You're not taking it out, you're just adding the word accessories.
Adding word in.
Right before that parcel, just add accessories.
Just put accessories parcel. Great.
Probably need a plaus trophy in there.
No, it's fine.
Is it, okay, then write down, put it back down there too, yep. Got a spelling error there, but, okay. So if we, um, if we vote that we want to submit this, then it could be sent to Bob His tomorrow. He has a deadline of midnight tomorrow night for any, um, motions to amend. He did indicate today that he might allow something like this, might allow something like this on the floor, but I thought it was more, um, conservative that we would take a vote and submit it. So that's the, that's the, um, backup or that's the intent.
Could you go over the visual one more time? I, I was distracted, I'm sorry.
Are you?
So the written word that we had before, Denny, Alan Bishop, he mapped it and he came up with this red line being right here. And the only thing that it does is it cuts, it cuts into this one parcel. So you're saying.
Legal description for one Elliott goes along the train tracks to that line over on the west side.
Yeah, so it was the intent of the zoning to include the one Adams, one Elliott parcel, right?
But there's nothing, there's no other, um, properties on it, right? There's not, there's.
No.
Is it, is it not buildable because it's on tracks?
It's all part of the same part, the legal description of that parcel or the accessories parcel goes all the way down. We don't know anything about the buildability of it or not.
The concern was with part of it in and part of it out of that description, would it raise problems down the road, you know, with an application coming in?
And that building is the fitness center, right?
Yeah.
Where we heard from the new owner, so we definitely want to include that. I think that was always our intention.
I just want to, it's better to remove the ambiguity about the line, but cutting through the property, I think.
Yeah, you want to have the whole parcel.
Right.
Legal parcel be in the district.
Right.
Whether you build on it or not.
Right. Well, let's just say for, I'm just trying to understand, I, I'm sorry, I can't see very well, but are those train tracks through the middle of the parcel?
Yes.
There's no, it's not like we're going to be putting in like.
And a bike path.
Yeah, okay, so it's not going to have a bunch of buildings along it, it's just.
Does include an existing building, if you see.
Right, or on the side.
There's a building here.
Right there, but where the train tracks are, nothing's going to happen.
I know, I mean.
It's hard to imagine, there's not really that much room. It's not very wide and it's rock.
Probably all MBTA right away anyways.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, the point was just, just that it's, it's not.
Legal parcel should, all, all the legal parcels should be included.
Right, that was the point that I, I thought was, would make it clear in the future. It's, you know, if you have part of the parcel in the overlay and part of it not, then how does the board evaluating that down the road, right?
I, I appreciate that. Now that it's blown up, I, I feel better.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Alan Bishop generated this map for us, so probably should have thought about asking him to do that sooner, but it was the question from the town meeting member that prompted it.
Good.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, let's, um, do you want to discuss the other Milton Landing reference too while we're discussing it?
Yes, so in Article Two, which is the, um, establishing the fund on the infrastructure improvement. Remember we changed the article some time ago to allow for public amenities overall and not just, um, at Milton Landing? But we didn't change the, the article, which has the, the language in the fund portion of the article. So, um, uh, I don't know if that's something, um, that anybody has readily available to bring up, but I, I can see if I do. One second.
So essentially the question here is we refer to Milton Landing as the location where we can spend the money from the fund and really intend, I think, for that to be broader to the Milton Village Mixed Use Overlay.
Right.
Cheryl, I do have that in my folder. I don't know if, if you have it, then.
I think I, just give me one second, I think.
Yeah, no, no.
Just pull it up.
And we're bringing this up because this also is about, in my opinion, a boundary issue, as relates to the fund. So what we're proposing is that we just change that language that references Milton Landing, which is a very small defined area to the full Milton Village Mixed Use Overlay, so that.
Actually, why don't you bring it up, sorry?
Okay, that's.
I'll, I'll let you bring it up faster.
That's correct, April, and I think the, I think the intent is that it be able to be applied throughout the district and not just at the Landing.
Can you guys see this?
No.
Of course not, of course not, hold on. And this is what we were talking about here, right?
Um, well, that's the comment that came in from another town meeting member. Yeah, but do you have what, the, the warrant? The actual language that's in the.
I don't have that, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about, do you want to try and pull it up?
Yeah, I can do that, all right, sorry.
Nope, my bad.
Let me just go back.
I should just stop trying to share things because I'm not good at it.
Yeah, and if we don't, if we don't have it, I mean, does anybody feel concerned about not seeing the actual text?
No.
I don't either.
All right, that's fine then.
We can probably just vote it, Cheryl, I don't know if anybody.
So let me just read a portion of it and maybe that'll help for some. So what it says, um, trying to find the beginning, so recommended that the town vote pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half of the Mass General Laws to establish by bylaw a revolving fund for money received from applicants before the planning board pursuant to an application under the Milton Village Mixed Use Plan Unit Development to support significant improvement to infrastructure and public amenities at the Milton Landing, consistent with the town's vision and improvement plans. And then it goes on. So what we would do is just strike the words at the Milton Landing.
And replace it with.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right.
Milton Village Mixed Use Overlay District.
Right.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Peter Mullin. Sorry, I was just saying, thank you, Peter Mullin.
Yes.
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 So we need two super votes for these. Um, the first would be a motion to amend the Milton Village Mixed Use Plan Unit Development Overlay Zoning. One, to include the parcel, I don't have the parcel number.
E, the full parcel, E dash two dash two.
Accessories parcel.
Accessories parcel.
Sorry.
Okay, anybody want to make that motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Whoever, whoever, Denny or I get the, the motion and the second, however you want to.
Yeah, you can get the second, you can get the first.
Perfect, any discussion? If not, then let's do a roll call vote, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Um, Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay, and the second would be, um, an amendment to, a motion to amend the Milton Village District Improvement Revolving Fund.
So April, if I may, it would, now it's the way it's the articles in the, in the warrant, so it would be to amend Article Two.
Okay. Um, to remove the reference to Milton Landing in its place, make a reference to the Milton Village Mixed Use Plan Unit Development Overlay District. Or maybe not the district, just the overlay, period.
So move it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rich Beeler, roll call, sorry, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Carl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay, then we have one item left on our agenda, so thank you very much for that, Cheryl. Um, we have one item on the agenda that I asked Allison to add, which is a discussion of future zoning articles, which I really don't hope to be much of a discussion. I, I personally would like for us to, um, um, look at the Brook Road Overlay District, because if you recall, we approved an overlay district for Brook Road that included a parcel of three Laurel Street to be required in any redevelopment there. This is the site of the Knights of Columbus. I'm pleased to report that three Laurel Street, which was in very, very rough shape, it's a single family house, has since been redeveloped and it looks adorable. And I think it's been sold or it's on the market to be sold. Some happy new family will move in, so that's very good news. However, the Knights of Columbus is still a dilapidated horrible building. Um, and we do not have any reason to believe there's any imminent plans for that site. So what I would ask the board is if we could empower the Assistant Planning Director, Allison Quinn, to engage a discussion with the neighborhood and come back to us in a couple of months with some suggestions on what we can do to that overlay to make it effective. Does anybody have any reason?
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
That's a good idea. I have two other things that we could, I'm working on besides that, but I think that would be great.
No, I have, I think that would be fine. I think we definitely had a minimal need to remove the three Laurel Road from it.
Yes. Um, there's some technical challenges with that from what constitutes an overlay, so we'll let Allison figure that out, but I think the first step would be to work with the neighborhood and see what they can come up with, and I'm sure it'll be great. Um, Kathleen, we'll get to you in one second. The other item is Denny has been talking for quite some time about wanting to work on a tree bylaw. And so I am hoping that the board will approve her to go do this, work with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, um, to come up with some recommendations on a tree bylaw that we can discuss at a future date, but hopefully to put on the warrant for next spring. Anybody have any objection to that?
Nope.
Denny, do you have anything you want to say about it?
Um, I'm also looking at some of the rules and regulations that I think we can update um, for improvement so that, um, we're not reinventing the wheel every time a tree issue comes up. Um, we've gotten pretty good in the last couple of years, so we want to get it in writing for future planning board members when we're all no longer here, so.
So Denny, if I may, on that one.
Yes.
Every single plant should have existing trees to be removed on them.
Yes.
Because we, inevitably, we have to ask for them after plans are submitted.
Yep.
Actually, that's something that Allison, you should take note of as well. Um, that is part of a separate discussion on process. We can be a little bit more clear with our applicants on what the expectations are, and that should be on the list.
Yep.
Okay, good. And then Kathleen, do you want to talk about a couple of things that you're working on? And then anybody else, if they want, have any suggestions? We can certainly discuss this in the future again, but.
So there are two things. One, condominium conversion by law. And so I worked on a draft and I've sent it to Cheryl. Cheryl had some comments and I'm going to futz around with that a little bit. I also sent it to Alex Whiteside and asked his opinion. Um, he had interesting, um, thought, which was mine was an attempt to rewrite the existing bylaw and he doesn't think that's a good idea because two projects were built under that zoning, um, the Borough Estates and, and Hollingwood, Hollingswood. And he's, he's concerned that if we change the zoning, they would come back and want to add more buildings or something. So he would prefer it to be a whole new condominium conversion by law section, not a rewrite of the existing one, which is an interesting idea. And I'm like, okay, fine. And so that's, so I'm working on that and that's, I'll, I'll send that around. And then the second thing is that with the Affordable Housing Committee, we're looking at the, um, people think we have an accessory apartment by law. We do not. We have a temporary apartment by law. And it's pretty terrible, um, for all kinds of reasons. And so people keep having to go to the zoning board because we say it has to be in an existing dwelling and, and it can only be on the second floor of the garage, but not the first floor. It can't be in a separate building. You can't be doing anything on the outside. So people have to always hire Marion to go to the zoning board to get a variance to allow you to do the new construction of the in-law apartment at the same time that you're doing the addition to the house. Instead of doing the addition to the house, ripping it apart, putting in an in-law.
And I would just add to, if I, oh, sorry, Kathleen.
So, so, so that's, that's a problem. The other problem is that our special permit requires that you put the names of all of the children and everybody that's in the house on the permit, which is clearly weird and probably a privacy violation, and I, I would not be excited about that. And, um, if anybody changes, like you got remarried or you got divorced or whatever, your permit's suddenly out, out, out the window because it's only those people. And lastly, it requires you, when you sell the house, so if I move it to a trust or something like that, I have to rip it all out and come back and apply again. Um, so what's clearly stupid is that you, when you have this and you had a buyer who had, was moving in with their mother and said, I'd love to buy a house with an in-law apartment, you can't do it. You have to rip it all out as soon as you sell it and then go back and do it all over.
So Kathleen, are you proposing to?
So I'm proposing two things.
Okay.
One, we could do an entirely new accessory unit by law, which would cover all this sort of situation. Um, if we thought that was too radical, we have to do two, which is rewrite the temporary apartment one that we've got.
And I just want to add that, um, some background that I think might be helpful if anybody's listening or watching, and, and also for the board members. Um, I was contacted a week or so ago by a broker who has a home listed that has an in-law or temporary apartment in it. And, um, and they were concerned about what would be required when they sold the home. And they have a buyer who's interested in potentially having that in-law apartment or temporary apartment for a family, but don't, they don't need that right away. But the requirement would be that they would have to rip it out and then install a new one later. And it makes absolutely no sense to have that kind of requirement in our bylaw. Excuse me. And it's a financial hardship in, in my view. And then another is I was contacted by a family in East Milton about one of these temporary apartments and, um, the, um, the younger generation, both Milton High grads, and they said that they have a number of friends or a number of people they know in Milton who are looking to do the same thing. Move back to Milton from Boston and, um, and basically be taking the family home that they grew up in and their parents would be moving into a temporary apartment. and their parents would be moving into a temporary apartment. And so it's, as they described it, it's beneficial for the older generation who doesn't need the big house anymore. And it's beneficial for the younger generation who wants to come back and raise their family in Milton. So I, one of the things that I think might be useful is if we think about a little bit of a process to talk to some of these people, and maybe that could be done through Allison or through, at least initially through Allison with a few phone conversations, because I think it might be beneficial for people if we're thinking about more than tinkering around with it to really kind of understand what the the demand might be.
Yeah, it'd be great to have us like a, maybe the beginnings of a small working group to think through, you know, the town perspective, but also the resident perspective, so we're capturing everything.
I did talk to Beverly at the zoning board to find out how many applications had come before, and she said four or five in the last two years. So it's not like a huge thing, well, because it's pretty terrible, it's hard to use. And I asked her about enforcements, and she said basically the only enforcements they've had have been people forgetting that the permit only lasts for four years. And so it expires and people forget. And then once it's expired, you have to go through the whole process of reapplying, you know, applying again with all the original filing fees and expenses of the application because you're past the date, so.
The way it's written now is kind of a deterrent for people to move forward anyway.
Right, it really makes people go underground and do it illegally.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I think this sounds great Kathleen, I'm totally in support of you drafting whatever you think as a recommendation for the board, and you can work with Allison on how best to try to solicit some feedback from residents or.
Okay.
Whatever you guys think is best, whatever. I mean, and if anyone else has any other ideas on bylaws that you want to work on, by all means, just let us know. We can add those to the agenda, but I think for now, you sound like a pretty good list of things.
I just want to say, I'd like to continue to look at the condo conversion and see about it as an alternative to the 40Bs for the kind of four to five acre sites with the largest arc home on them.
Okay. So you and Kathleen will work on this?
Right.
Um, anybody have anything else I'd like to say before we adjourn?
What, are we, do we need to meet early for town meeting? Are, are we gonna, sometimes we meet a half hour early, so just.
Um, well, we already posted the, we're going to post it.
Yeah, posted at seven o'clock Tuesday, the 28th.
Okay, all right, so you're ahead of me, thank you.
That's 30 minutes in advance, yeah, so that's when we will meet. And um.
And and I will be there, I guess Rich had mentioned he he might have to call in.
Okay.
And he'll be available by text, he had told me earlier today.
Yeah.
Rich, you all set?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then on just logistics, April, on the motions to amend, is Allison going to follow up? Or do you want me to follow up with sending them to Bob His tomorrow?
Do you mind doing it Cheryl, just because you've been the consistent communicator?
Just want to be clear, just going to do.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that would be great.
Fine.
And then you and I are on that tomorrow to plan for the town meeting presentation.
Yes.
Should be great, I'm very excited for town meeting next week, hopefully it'll be one night.
Yes.
We will adjourn to meet again on July 28th, which is the town meeting. I'll let you do the motion to adjourn. So move. Okay, roll call vote, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes, thank you all very much.
All right.